I'd like to call to order this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, September 18th, 2024. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Zulik?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Stossberg?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Asari?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will continue with our land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. This evening's agenda has no minutes for approval. Then we will move on to reports. First, reports from council members. Then we will have a report from Nathan Ferreira on the development of the Summit Hill Community Land Trust through the Bloomington Housing Authority. We will then move on to reports from council committees, and I believe we have a report from the Hiring Committee this evening. And then we will move to the first period of public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Then we will move to appointments to boards and commissions. Then we have legislation for first readings. Ordinance 2024-18 to amend Title VIII of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding Green Acres Conservation District. So that item is on the agenda tonight, but we will not be taking any public comment on that item tonight. It will go to second reading, I assume, on October 1st. Next, in our agenda, we will move to legislation for second readings and resolutions. We have ordinance 2024-17 to amend Title XX of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendment and updates related to grading permit in alignment with Title XIII, which is stormwater, and updates to municipal code 20.04 related to steep slopes. Then we have appropriation ordinance 2024-03 to additionally appropriate from the Public Works General Fund for personnel expenditures, and appropriation ordinance 2024-04 to additionally appropriate from the Public Works General Fund for debris removal. We will then have an additional period of public comment on items not on the agenda. Then we will discuss some matters of council schedule and adjourn. So we will start with reports from council members, and I'll start on my right. Councilmember Zulik, do you have a report this evening?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
No report.
Councilmember Ruff?
No report tonight, thank you.
On my other side, councilmember Daley?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I have a report. It is about Safe Streets for All. I am the council liaison for that committee, and the committee just wrapped up its meetings for the planning process for Safe Streets for All. And the next step is that the consultants' tool design will work on our plan and get it back to us. I just wanted to go through some high-level or interesting bullet points from our final meeting that we just had earlier this week. So one thing is that most crashes occur on our streets with speeds of 30 miles per hour or greater. This is something we kind of already knew, but Safe Streets for All will be encouraging us to explore a 20 mile per hour city speed limit. Most Vision Zero communities across the U.S. already have this. Indiana makes it difficult because I think we're not allowed to have a speed limit lower than 25 miles per hour unless it's a school zone or one other kind of zone. So we're looking at whether we can make that work with the second prong and whatever Indiana The city has extensive data on our crashes across the city and the county. One interesting note there is that when we look at crashes that involve a bike or a pedestrian or a scooter, most of them are labeled as "other," where if there are two cars, they will be labeled as a head-on collision or a right-turn collision, or crossing the center line. But it's something that a lot of times folks in the police department don't know how to categorize crashes with bike, peds, and scooters, and so they label them as "other" instead of putting in that category that could be useful for us to look at later. Most people say they don't feel safe on our streets, and one of the biggest reasons, two very big reasons, speed limits and how fast cars are going, and then the other is that drivers are not paying attention. So it's, I think, something to look into. How do we make people pay attention on roads? I think since we got cell phones with internet in the cars, crashes have gone up across the U.S. The highest priority intersection in the city is the College and Walnut intersection at 45 and 46. Those do not belong to us, per se. They are state roads, so they're a lot harder to change. The highest city-controlled intersection in the U.S. that needs adjusting is, coincidentally, Third and College. So we talked about this at the last council meeting about the Convention Center, but it's the intersection in our city that needs a lot of attention. Most everything that Safe Streets for All is going to be recommending that we do is already in our transportation plan, which is really exciting. Tool design also consulted to create our transportation plan six years ago, so for the most part, they were like, hey, we've told you all this, and it would be neat if you did it. One thing that, there's nomenclature that is new that is coming out. So one is the Safe System Approach, which is, it's about safe road users, safe vehicles, safe speeds, safe roads, and then post-crash care. And it talks about humans are vulnerable, responsibility is shared, humans make mistakes, death, serious injury is unacceptable, redundancy is crucial, and safety is proactive. So a lot of, I would say, new phrases to talk about how to implement our transportation plan. One thing that is kind of new for us is post-crash care. We do have someone, our engineering director has to put out a report when there is a serious injury or fatal crash in the city. But something that will be recommended to us is to have something like a support team assisted response, STAR. Denver has this. It's two people who go out whenever there is a serious crash, and they study the area, and they are allowed to put up temporary materials that would potentially change the design of the intersection or the street where that crash occurred. So this would be different where we had a fatal crash on 14th and Walnut, and nothing has happened since then. We would potentially then have a protected bike lane instead of nothing happening, or maybe some kind of sidewalk on Walnut Pike instead of nothing right away. So these are things that need to be funded, positions that need to be funded, basically. We don't have space in engineering or planning, so just still as we go into the budget approval, thinking about that, I would say. There is more, but I think those are some pretty exciting things. We're going to continue installation of no-turn on red and leading pedestrian intervals and bike intervals, so giving pedestrians or cyclists a few-second head start to get into an intersection. Also looking at more scramble intersections that they do internationally, which really excites me across the city. And I think in general, Tool will be recommending a capital improvement program, which we on council have talked a lot about, and I think we'll talk more about with the GO bonds, just like bonding for long-term transportation improvements. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Asari, do you have a report?
Just a very, very brief one. We're in the midst of National Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs from September 15th to October 15th, and so just wanted to highlight the ongoing events and celebrations happening here in Bloomington. There's lots of opportunities to gather together, bring family together, and learn and celebrate the rich history, vibrant cultures, and significant contributions of Hispanic and Latina communities. But for more information, visit bloomington.in.gov/latino/HHM, or just look up Bloomington Latino Heritage Month on Google, and you will find that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stossberg?
Yes, I just want to briefly announce my constituent meeting, which is this weekend. It does break pattern. Usually those are third Saturdays, but this weekend, because of my child's cross-country meet, I am going to have my constituent meeting on Sunday at 3:00, and it will be only via Zoom. So that Zoom link will be going up sometime between now and Sunday on the calendar page and also on my council webpage, and it actually will be on my Facebook page as well. So if anybody wants to join me, from 3:00 to 4:00 on Zoom on Sunday, the 22nd, that would be great. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And I'll just say that I had my monthly constituent meeting last Saturday, and we did talk a lot about the consensus-building activities that we have hosted as council on August 14th and September 11th, and the topic of homelessness and the urgency we all feel about providing housing to folks. Next, let's move on to reports from the mayor and city offices, and we always stretch that a little bit. In this case, we have a report from Nathan Ferreira of the Summit Hill Community Land Trust. So welcome, Mr. Ferreira.
Thank you so much. My name is Nathan Ferreira, N-A-T-H-A-N-F-E-R-R-E-I-R-A. It got it already, that's great. And so I work with the Bloomington Housing Authority. I'm the Director of Real Estate Development, and several years ago, we started a nonprofit called Summit Hill Community Development Corporation as a development wing of the Housing Authority. Across the country, this is becoming more common, as housing authorities go through RAD conversions and no longer have public housing. They start a nonprofit to essentially start to build more affordable housing. Not here to talk about that, but wanted to give you the introduction. Because my time is short and there's a lot I want to say, I'm going to read, so my apologies. So as of today, average year-to-date home sales price from MLS for Monroe County is $377,248, and the median home sale price is $328,000. For just Bloomington, the average sale price is $387,561, and the median is $325,000. Statewide, the average sales price is 4% higher at the end of August 24 from where it stood a year before, August 23. In Monroe County, our average sales price is 10% higher during the same period. So just to give you a little context of what potential homeowners are facing in our county and in our city. So a little explanation of what a land trust is, and then I'll dive into what we're working on and answer any questions you've got. Because incomes don't keep pace with rising housing costs, more and more subsidy is required to develop affordable housing. The primary purpose of the community land trust is to acquire and hold land in perpetuity for the benefit of the community. We use this land to develop or rehab housing to be sold affordably to income-qualifying households. Only the improvements are sold to the homeowners. Ownership of the land is retained by the CLT, the Community Land Trust. We use a ground lease, which is a legal document that ensures that when the owner is ready to sell, it must be sold to an income-qualifying household. The ground lease also records the value of the land and any additional subsidy contributed to make the initial house sale affordable. So this subsidy, a public subsidy, gets recycled every time that house resales. It gets passed on, and the house for the next sale is discounted by that much, plus whatever additional subsidy is needed to make it affordable for the next buyer. And this is how we create permanent affordability in homeownership. With Clear Creek Modular Homes, we've built four homes, three of which have been sold, two more homes are under construction. We currently have a two-bedroom home available for purchase, if you know anybody. It's $205,000, which is significantly less than what you would find on the market for a new house. With the land removed from the equation, our home sales prices have ranged between $205 and $226.5 for a four-bedroom. The CLT sells homes to households up to 120% of the area median income. So just to correct any misinterpretations about this neighborhood, it's not a low-income neighborhood. We are targeting low and middle-income buyers. Just to give you a sense, 120% right now for a family of three is $107,280 annual income. So that captures a lot of our workers that work in the city and might not be able to afford a house here. A 2019 study of 160 CLTs across the country showed that 60% of CLT homeowners use the equity from the sale of their CLT home to purchase a traditional market-rate home. For some, CLTs are a stepping stone toward conventional homeownership. For others, it is their forever home. And our ground lease does allow homeowners to pass along their home to their children without requiring the heirs to income-qualify. However, when they go to sell, that resale formula from the ground lease still takes effect. One of our homeowners right now is a single mother of four who works at a local bank. She could not buy a home in Bloomington, so this has created stability for her. She is also a graduate of the Bloomington Housing Authority's Family Self-Sufficiency Program, which means she was able to convert her Section 8 voucher to a mortgage payment. So for 15 years of her mortgage, she is still paying what she can afford and is getting her housing choice voucher toward her mortgage payment. A second home that we've sold is, hold on, find my spot. A three-bedroom household was sold to two social workers that were living in substandard rental with an ever-increasing rent. They were looking at having to find housing outside of Monroe County and commute to their Bloomington-based jobs. Again, it would have been very difficult to purchase a home on their salaries in Monroe County. We are currently building a single-family development that is part of the Atlas on 17th PUD. This is just west of Arlington Road, north of the Roundabout at 17th Street. So if you're going north, there's a new street at the top of the hill called Tell You Ride, and if you hang a left there, you'll see our 45 lots. We are working to build beyond 45 homes by maximizing through some plexes, and I'd actually also really like to try a cottage development. However, the UDO requirements, the minimum space needed for a cottage development is one acre. The way our neighborhood is laid out, it won't work in our neighborhood. So along with the conversations from last week and other UDO conversations, that's an opportunity I think we're missing out on for affordable housing. I think it'd be very difficult, actually, to find any lot in Bloomington that is large enough to do a cottage development, but the UDO has the cottage development in there. We just need to lower that minimum required land amount. We are also working toward a townhome-style pilot four-plex with a modular builder. I am an enthusiastic supporter of modular. Clear Creek is a modular builder. This particular modular builder does what can be used for multifamily, so they're stackable and they can go up four or five levels. What we're thinking about is two- or three-level townhome-style plexes. However, the estimate that they provided when I dug in a bit deeper, we found that the cost of foundations, delivery, and setting, the contractor cost to complete the work on-site was not included in their estimates. So when everything was added in, we weren't finding that we could sell the townhomes for any less than our single-family homes that Clear Creek is building. I'm still pursuing this. I'm still trying to figure it out. I think it's still worth pursuing. Also, it creates density. We have two major developments coming in that have required percentages of affordability, and so I think Sudbury or Summit Point and Hopewell are perfect places for, if we can figure out how to do this modular four-plex, that's going to be a great place. The other piece of this, obviously, is we have to ensure that we can actually sell these. So we will be doing a market study to really gauge demand for townhome. Essentially, these are affordable condos, is what we're looking at. So that's kind of it for the land trust, and I'll answer questions in a moment. I also want to mention that Summit Hill Community Development Corporation, where the land trust is housed, will own the land under the Core Community Flats Project, which is the legacy hospital site, the historic building, where we're doing a tax credit deal, a low-income housing tax credit. And so if you're not familiar, many LI-Tech projects have an affordability period, and when that affordability period expires, they often go market rate. So think Union on Crescent would be a good example. So that has an affordability period. Those will probably go market rate when that affordability period ends. With our model, it will not, because it'll still be part of Summit Hill, which has an affordability mission, so we are going to ensure that Core remains permanently affordable in perpetuity. So we're also getting ready to break ground on an early childcare center and affordable housing. It's a two-story building at 14th and Monroe. It'll serve 28 children from the community ages zero to three, and will include three affordable two-bedrooms on the second floor. We'll complete the Early Learning Center and Core Community Flats in 2026. We anticipate building out the current land trust homes by 2027. The nature of housing development is such that because we'll be wrapping up our current projects by 2027, we have to be planning for our next project now. And so that's part of why I want you to be aware of us and that we're here and we're developing this affordable housing expertise, so keep us in mind. There's some opportunities I want to mention that we're pursuing, and then just kind of generally. There's currently HUD and Department of Transportation funding opportunities to convert commercial space into residential. This is something that could help address our affordable housing crisis. We also support changes to the UDO that make missing middle housing easier to build. I mentioned the cottage developments. There's also things like courtyard buildings, stacked plexes, which stacked four-plexes tend to be much less expensive to build because you have a central staircase, shared mechanicals. So that's something they're doing a lot of out West, so we need to figure out how to make that possible here. And then we'd like to add a component to the land trust to acquire and rehab existing homes and/or develop a homeowner choice option, where homeowners find a market-rate home and access subsidy from the land trust by agreeing to the ground lease and contributing the land to the CLT. That's how the Indianapolis-based land trust that's starting right now is doing their program. They're doing a homeowner choice program. Obviously, additional land and subsidy are always welcome to grow and sustain the land trust, so please keep us in mind. Additional subsidy means that we can serve lower-income buyers. If we can grow that subsidy, we can reach lower on that AMI scale. But most importantly, right now, I'm just trying to get the word out. I've been doing a lot of information sessions, so I want to share information, and I'm hoping people here will share that with people that might be interested. We really are trying to target people, working families, that can't afford to buy a home in Monroe County. And I will say, this is not conventional homeownership. It's not meant to be, so this is really somewhere in between. And I mentioned before that most homebuyers, according to this study, use the subsidy that they develop to go buy a conventional market-rate home when they finally resell. So thanks for having me. I'm happy to answer any questions. It's great to, I've spoken to several of you individually, but it's great to talk to you all.
Thank you very much. Are there any councilmember questions for Mr. Ferreira? Yes, councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. I just want to hear a little bit more about, so you say that you have one home right now that is for sale, and I want to, like, how do people apply for that? And are these buyers subject to the same kinds of mortgage-credit sort of requirements? Like, if they have to go get a mortgage, do they go through a traditional bank setting? Like, I just want to learn a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And so I do these information sessions, which is part of our program, and it goes into more depth. And then I also present at the City's Homebuyers Club and go into more depth. But you're exactly right, it's traditional mortgages. Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac have created a ground lease that we use. We adapted our ground lease from the Fannie Mae approved. And what that means is banks have very little risk lending to land trust mortgages because they can sell it to Fannie Mae, they can sell it on the secondary market, essentially. So this is a pretty safe thing to do. I've been working hard to get banks on board. I have two fully committed and two that have created mortgages, land trust mortgages. So yes, you do have to still qualify for a mortgage in our program. It's actually a pretty conventional program in that sense. And then other requirements are you have to live or work in Monroe County for six months. You have to complete our information session, and you have to complete the City's Homebuyers Club, which also creates access to $10,000 in down payment assistance. I'll also mention that right now, Federal Home Loan Bank of Indianapolis has an additional down payment assistance program for minority homebuyers of up to $25,000 that can be paired with the city's $10,000. So we're really trying to get the word out. That money, once it's used, is gone, so they just released another $2.5 million, which will probably go quick, but we're trying to get some buyers to access that down payment assistance, too.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Asari?
Thank you so much. I was just curious, I think, and I might send you some written questions, but the 30,000-foot overview question is, what can we do, whether in legislation or otherwise, to support the work of the CLT, particularly in addressing pain points that you might have in finding land, developing that land, et cetera?
Well, I'd say that some of the UDO changes that were discussed last week with regards to SROs and allowing more density in more areas is going to only help us carry out our mission. So that's one thing. General support, I would say, getting the word out, keeping us in mind if there is access or if there is influence to have land requirements around affordability or even involving the land trust. Like, the city's RFI for the Hopewell South that just came out actually mentions land trust in there, so we appreciate those opportunities. And then, I mean, we apply to the standard city grants like home and CDBG funds that are federal funds that come through. So always advocating for more of those to allow us to build more is going to be a big help. And then if there's other sources of funding to increase our subsidy or start something like a homebuyer choice program, we would love that as well, so.
Fantastic. May I ask a quick follow-up question?
And so within the CLT model, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but at the beginning, it takes a lot of subsidy because you don't really start putting money back into the trust until people start selling. Is that correct?
So we did things a little differently here. Most CLTs start from the ground up as small nonprofits that develop over time. We, luckily, the gift of the land was the huge subsidy. So that is allowing us to start kind of full steam ahead. Otherwise, that would usually be the biggest obstacle for land trusts. So let me, can you ask your question again?
Yeah, well, I hadn't asked the question yet, but the question, but it's useful background because the question I was going to ask is whether you need additional subsidies to support the long-term viability of the land trust, and if those are things we should be thinking about in future iterations of the budget.
Yeah, I mean, so the whole idea behind land trusts is that they're self-sustaining, and we charge a ground lease fee, which kind of looks like an HOA fee, and we provide stewardship services for that. So we, these homes are an asset that, even though we don't own the home, we just own the land, we have some responsibility to protect and make sure, don't foreclose, and so that's part of our role. We charge a fee for that. And then we also, for the title work and some of the work that we do around finding buyers and then setting up the resales, we charge fees for this as well. And so some of that covers my staff time, but you're right, it's not much at this point. It'll grow over time. So. So absolutely, we need more money for supporting the organization. But it's also part of why the decision was made to put the land trust in an existing, however many 60-year-old organization, that is the Housing Authority, because we have this infrastructure for supporting nonprofit affordable housing development, so.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Big supportive of your work.
Great.
Are there other questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Thanks so much for coming and reporting on this. I am also a big fan. How is it best for folks to get ahold of you if they would like to ask questions about owning a home?
I brought some flyers. We are also on Facebook and LinkedIn and, but info@shcdc.org is probably the easiest way. I check that all the time. So info, yep, that's correct. And that's also here in the flyer. But then also keep an eye out for information sessions and coming to the Homebuyers Club or other ways to access the program, so thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much. I appreciate, we all appreciate you being here.
I appreciate the invitation and would be happy to come back, so have me back.
Okay, best of luck to you. All right, well, then we will move on to reports from council committees. I think we have a report from the Hiring Committee.
Yes, thank you. So after doing some interviews and assessing the situation, the Hiring Committee is ready to make a recommendation. We would recommend that the council hire Lisa Lainer for the position of Council Administrator Attorney with a start date of September 30th and a compensation package that includes a yearly salary of $104,089 and the other benefits, insurance, vacation, et cetera, of all full-time city employees. This recommendation is contingent upon successful completion of a background check and Ms. Lainer updating her Indiana Law License status to active. So I'm hoping that somebody will make a motion to that effect. If anybody has any further questions about this recommendation, please let me know.
Would anybody make that motion, please?
I didn't make it because I'm the Hiring Committee Chair. And so I think that the motion got sent out in the memo.
Councilmember Zulik.
I move to adopt the recommendations of the Hiring Committee and hire Lisa Lainer for the position of Council Administrator/Attorney with a start date of September 30th and compensation package that includes a yearly salary of $104,089 and other benefits, including insurance, vacation, et cetera, of all full-time city employees, contingent on successful completion of a background check and Ms. Lainer updating her Indiana Law License status to active.
Thanks.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to make that offer to Lisa Lainer. Is there any debate? Okay, I don't see any questions or comments. Oh. Yes, Councilmember Asari.
Just one thing maybe for the benefit of the public because we have had lots of conversations in public about, I think, our growing desires to think about the, as we think about outcomes and budgeting, et cetera, for also thinking about the outcomes of the ways that we've organized as a council. And one of the things that was addressed in the report is that it was decided by the committee to continue to address those questions once we hire this person. So I think that those, as long as those questions are still things that can be discussed, I am happy to move forward and support.
Councilmember Stossberg.
I don't think that we should say that it was decided by the committee that we should move forward with those things. It's acknowledged by the committee that there are those issues and that we, as a council, I think, need to move forward with thinking about how the council office is best utilized and how to make that work and that those conversations absolutely need to be ongoing. It's, that was not the task of the Hiring Committee. So we just need to take that on as a whole council. And this is a great opportunity to do it while we have somebody new coming in.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. I think we can do a voice vote. So all those, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. And we will ask Human Resources to extend the offer to her tomorrow. Next, we will move to appointments. Are there any Elder Council Committee reports, first of all? No. Now we will move to public comment. So this is maximum of 20 minutes for the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. And please, you would need to say your name and write your name down if you're here in person. And you will have up to three minutes. And Deputy Attorney Kulak or Interim Attorney Administrator Kulak, could you make the announcement for Zoom, please?
Yes, if you are on Zoom and you would like to make a public comment, you can do so by raising your hand using the Reactives tab. And if you cannot find that, you can send a chat to the meeting host. It may also be in the More tab.
All right, we'll start here in council chambers.
Great, hello, thanks. My name's Greg Alexander. Couple weeks ago, a representative of the CIB stood on, at this podium and used the phrase pedestrian safety to describe a segregated facility that excludes the general public. If the people passing from one building to the next are pedestrians, why should they be held separate from other pedestrians? It's bad enough to ask for a segregated design, but to call it pedestrian safety is outrageous. The thing is, if they really wanted to install a side skywalk for pedestrian safety, that is possible. Make a genuine branch off of the B-line. Then on the other side of college, a ramp down to the Smith Avenue Greenway. I mean, haven't you ever actually run across conventioneers crossing the B-line there? They always seem astonished to find themselves on a busy path. From their perspective, it looks like a warehouse loading dock in the middle of a vast parking lot. The Convention Center should have a bona fide connection to the B-line. And why shouldn't that connection also help the public cross college safely? Imagine they build a hotel to the north across Third Street from the old Convention Center. They'll want to build a new gerbil tube, but the B-line already exists. Pedestrian safety means good connections to our existing network. Okay, I lost that battle, all right. But a member of this council, man, they said that this body represents all of the citizens. So they asked for a little more collaboration from the CIB than what an individual would see. And then they voted for the budget. That's so insulting. I know exactly what it's like to be a regular citizen going to the CIB. I don't get to vote on their budget. This is why I have been telling you about how the Parks Department spent millions of dollars while stalling pedestrian transportation planning for a quarter century. Once you approve the budget, our democratic input is done. In fact, the CIB treasurer immediately went to social media to wage a retaliatory smear campaign against the council members who voted against the budget. That's how little respect they have for your role. When people come to you asking for money, they feel like they deserve a rubber stamp. And here's a quote from the president of the CIB three days before the public input session. He declared in advance, they are not going to consider public input about the gerbil tube. They've explicitly rejected collaborating with anyone on this design element. Don't take my word for it. The CIB president is telling you the exact same thing I am. The moment you approve the budget, democratic input is over. Then special interests, people putting their fingers in the wind. We need you to understand your own authority. Thank you.
Let's go to Zoom. Do we have anybody via Zoom who would like to give public comment? Okay, we'll go to the next person here in council chambers then. So please remember to state your name and you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Joe Davis. Thank you for granting me the time to comment. The reason I am here tonight is I wish to speak about the runaway freight train that is the Convention Center expansion. On Monday evening, there was a public, supposed public input session that took place from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. I happened to be at a county council meeting and was only able to arrive at 7:15. Well, by the time I arrived, that meeting was already over. I looked at the sign-in sheet. There were only maybe two dozen people who signed in. Those who were left in attendance seemed to be just the groups that were already involved in the project, hardly any members of the public. I don't know what was happening. There was no recording by cats of the presentation or of the session. There was no listing or place where people were told where they could go to submit comments outside of that listening session. And I am just flabbergasted how the people have been left out of this process. Flabbergasted. Tens of millions of dollars are going to be spent without hardly any public input. The public's money grant you. And we are only going to create a glorified YMCA. I looked at the Convergence presentation on 8/14 that was presented to the CIB with conceptual designs. And they're all uninspiring, ugly, and there's no green space. None whatsoever. It looks like, it looks like a significant portion of the place is going to be just like the back end of a Kroger with multiple spaces for tractor-trailer trucks to be parking. I just can't believe this. The, the CIB is, I thought that they were created to be a check and balance and provide a duty of care to the people. When the Hamilton administration tried to wrestle the Convention Center away from the county, I thought that they were brought in to protect the people. It seems like the CIB sees themselves as an honors class who is trying to impress their professor with outlandish ideas using monopoly money. Well, this is real money.
Your time is up.
And we, the people, are the professor. And right now, this is a failing grade.
Mr. Davis, your time is up.
A failing grade. We have to stop this. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody with a hand raised on Zoom at this point?
No.
Thank you. We'll move to the next person here in council chambers.
Thank you, Madam President. This is Christopher Emery from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I had some scripted words. I'll go a little, veer a little off that. But we, in passing poetic on the Convention Center, I just want to thank at the last community information input session that we did have some of our fine elected officials here that showed interest. Councilmember Stossberg, Piedmont Smith, Zulik, and Daly Pretendick. I think Mayor Thompson and some of our staff were there. I might have missed some other ones. But making sure that the public officials who are representative of the people, elected by the people, are there and being part of the expansion. This is a historic project that needs to be completed up to this community's standards. And I just want to sort of say a little bit about Mr. Alexander's comments on the gerbil tube, skywalk. I don't think of it as a safe streets, the chamber doesn't think of it as a safe streets. It's just having one building. If there was no traffic on college, it would still be essential that the Convention Center is not broken up into two buildings. Getting food in between those two buildings requires them to be connected and to be joined. This is not anything that needs to be scientific. It's just common sense that the buildings need to be connected, however they need to be connected. And those sort of details are not up to the chamber's purview on that. The reason I did want to speak a little bit today was, again, about the topic of competitive pay for the Bloomington Police Department. I, you know, the mayor's budget and public safety remains a top priority and having competitive salaries are crucial to attracting and retaining qualified police. We saw how understaffed and how burnout challenges are facing the force presently. This shortens the mandatory overtime for restraining officers and worsening retention. The announcement of two new police officers today was giving us hope and I think we're moving in the right direction, which then goes back to my other statement that I've been going on about, which is we have to be mindful of the long-term implications for the city in its personnel budget. Bloomington's general fund currently holds 59 million reserves. However, the city is planning to spend more than it collects in 2025, raising concerns about future funding shortfalls. Although all through the reserve is a great buffer, continued salary increases across all departments could strain this general fund. The budget includes raises for all departments and most of them well-passed due. The chamber urges the common council to carefully balance those wages with long-term financial sustainability, ensuring the salary increases do not jeopardize other essential services. So I'm recommending the, this body form a special committee that looks at long-term financial viability of the city, taking proactive steps that the Monroe County Council, your peers, have already done so. It's going to manage better between competitive wages and fiscal responsibility, securing public safety and other vital services for our future. And one thing, the Citizens Police Academy starts Tuesday. They're full, but I'm sure they have room for council members. Great place to ask very specific questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in council chambers who would like to give a comment? Attorney Kulak, do we have anybody on Zoom at this point?
No hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, thank you very much. So we will close the period of public comment and we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. I believe Team C has a recommendation to make. Councilmember Zulik.
Thank you. On behalf of interview committee, Team C, I would like to motion that for the Parking Commission, we appoint Katie Yoder to seat C2. And before anyone's seconds, I just want to say, this will be our final appointment and we have filled all of our seats. So not saying we're the best interview committee, I'm just saying no one else has done that.
All right, Councilmember Zulik, there's no competition, I don't think.
I'll second that. Enormous achievement of Team C.
Okay, very good. Are there any questions or comments about the motion on the table to appoint Katie Yoder to seat C2 of the Parking Commission? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you to Team C and to Ms. Yoder for volunteering. So we will now move to legislation for first readings.
I would like to move that ordinance 2024-18 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 20, let me try this again. Ordinance 2024-18 to amend Title 8 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Historic Preservation and Protection to establish a historic district regarding Green Acres Conservation District. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends the list of designated historic districts in Chapter 8.20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code by establishing the Green Acres Conservation District. In recommending this designation, the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission held a public hearing and submitted a map and accompanying report to the council. The map sets forth the boundaries of the district and classification of buildings within the district. The report demonstrates how this district meets the necessary criteria. At the end of three years after adoption of this ordinance, this conservation district- At the end of three years after adoption of this ordinance, this conservation district will elevate into a full historic district unless within 180 and 60 days before that date, a majority of the property owners provide the Historic Preservation Commission with written objections to the elevation.
Thank you. And that item will be discussed at a second reading on Tuesday, October 1st. So that's, we have moved the meeting, the first week of October, to Tuesday to avoid the holiday on Wednesday. So we will move on to second readings and resolutions.
2024-17 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will Clerk Bolden please read?
Let's try that. Ordinance 2024-17 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendment and updates related to grading, grading permit and alignment with Title 13 and Bloomington Municipal Code 20.04 related to steep slopes. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments throughout Title 20 related to changes to the grading permit and other erosion control regulations and amendments to 20.04 related to steep slopes to align with state regulations.
I move ordinance 2024-17 be adopted.
Second.
All right, and we have Ms. Jackie Scanlon here from the Department of Planning and Transportation to present this item.
Great, thank you. Good evening. So yes, we have a couple of Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance amendments to bring forward to tonight. The Plan Commission heard them as case ZO 3024 at their August 2024 hearing and voted to send the petition to a common council with a positive recommendation with a vote of eight to zero. And what we are proposing is that the Title 13 that was approved by common council on May 8th of 2024 and signed into law by Mayor Thompson on May 13th, which changes regulations related to stormwater and stormwater and erosion control permitting requirements to be in line with the Indiana Department of Environmental Management, we are proposing to make changes to Title 20 in order to align our previous erosion control regulations with those new requirements. So for example, the changes in Title 20 include removal of the grading permit process from Title 20 and a reconfiguration of that permitting that used to also cover the rest of the site improvement review such as parking, landscaping, and bicycle parking, and so that those now become their own process and to remove the erosion control and grading permit portion of that, which is now covered in Title 13. And then we also are proposing some updates to the parking section in 20.04 of Title 20 that are related to stormwater treatment of water coming off of and adjacent to parking lots, and as well as removal of the general erosion insultation section in Title 20, again because all of those things are now covered in Title 13. The second item in our proposal is that the state of Indiana changed the way steep slopes can be regulated, and we are trying to put Title 20 in line with those regulations where we used to be able to regulate slopes less than 25%. We now cannot, so we have changed our regulations to max that out. So anyway, I can answer any questions. What was in your packet was the draft pages pulled out of the UDO to show the particular changes as well as a copy of, if you needed it, staff had a copy of the whole UDO if you need to see those in context. And I can answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Scanlon. I'd like to go ahead and move Amendment 1 to ordinance 2024-17. This is just catching another change that is necessary for compliance with the state's requirements regarding steep slopes. There was another paragraph, 20.04.030, Part C, number six, construction measures, where we didn't, I guess it was just an oversight that it still said between 12 and 18% would be regulated, as you can see on the screen. So the change would be any development on slopes 12% or greater, but less than 25% shall incorporate construction measures such as, et cetera, et cetera. Is there a second for this?
Second.
Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to revise the ordinance with Amendment 1? Are there any questions or comment, or, yeah, any questions on that amendment? Seeing none, is there anybody in the public who would like to comment on the amendment? And again, it's not changing anything substantive. It's just catching another instance where we needed to comply with the new Indiana code. Nobody in council chambers? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to comment on Amendment 1 of ordinance 2024-17?
At this time, there are no hands raised. And again, if you, if you would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab or the more tab, or you can send a chat to the meeting host if you need assistance. Still no takers.
All right, we'll come back to council. Any comments on this amendment? Councilmember Stasburg?
Thanks for catching that.
I was surprised it got through Plan Commission since Councilmember Stasburg is our rep, and she is very detail-oriented. But there, it's just a minor thing.
August was really busy. Like, can I just say that? Like, August was really busy.
Indeed. All right, will the clerk please call the roll on Amendment 1?
Yes, Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Thank you. Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That amended passes. So let's go back to the ordinance as amended. Are there questions for Ms. Scanlon?
I do have a question. So it looks like in the, in Title 20, in several places, we're replacing grading permit with site development permit. Could you just summarize for us what the site development permit is for, what, on what basis you would be issuing that?
Sure. So as I mentioned briefly before, when we do a grading permit review now, we are checking the entirety of the site to make sure that the other items on your site, such as your sidewalks, your bike parking, your landscaping, that those are all in line with what you said you would build at the site plan approval phase. Sometimes those things change slightly, so we recheck them to just make sure that they're in line with Title 20. We do that now in the grading permit phase. So since we won't be doing a grading permit anymore, we're going to do a site development permit. So it will basically just be verifying that when you are ready to pull your building permit, that your site design is still in line with what was approved at the site plan stage, and that you're meeting all of the UDO requirements in Chapter 4, so 20.04 related to your site. So again, bike parking, landscaping, environmental standards, those are the types of things we'll be checking with the site development permit. Over the last few years, we have worked with developers to have the upfront drawings at site plan stage be much more detailed than what we had been getting in the past. So we really do envision it as just checking to make sure that things are okay, and having that be a pretty quick turnaround to issue that permit, signifying that we have made sure that what they are planning to build, what we're issuing a permit for building for, is the thing that they said they were going to build at the initial stage.
Thank you. That's helpful. Can I ask council staff to remove the amendment and put the Zoom back up there? I've, I've gotten spoiled by following, following the closed captioning when I miss something. Thank you. Are there any other questions for Ms. Scanlon? Yes, Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. Ms. Scanlon, if sultation occurs in a stream, that we don't have code to to enforce with that, do we? That's, that's items, is that items?
I believe so. It depends. I think if it's part of the city of Bloomington inventory of stormwater, I think that you could, that they could look at that as well, for like illicit discharge or something like that. But that, but that would not be planning transportation, yes.
Okay. In any case, we could, an environmental planner could inspect and notify item that there's sultation occurring and flag that for maybe state action.
Yes.
Uh huh. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, any other questions from council members? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on ordinance 2024-17 as amended? And if you're on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function. And if that doesn't work, you can send a message in the chat to the meeting host saying you'd like to comment. I don't see anybody here in chambers. Do we have any on Zoom?
No takers.
Thank you. All right, well, we'll come back to council then. Is there any final comments before we call this question? Okay, seeing none, I will ask Clerk Bolden to please call the roll on ordinance 2024-17 as amended.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daly?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That passes via a vote of eight to zero, and we'll move on to our next item of legislation. Thank you, Ms. Scanlon.
I moved my agenda. I would like to move appropriation ordinance 2024-03 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, that appropriation ordinance 2024-03 be introduced and read by the clerk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2024-03 to additionally appropriate from the Public Works General Fund for Personnel Expenditures. The synopsis is as follows. This appropriation ordinance funds the position authorized in ordinance 2024-10 to add a facilities asset and operations coordinator.
I move appropriation ordinance 2024-03 be adopted.
Second.
All right, and we have city, no, not attorney, Corporation Counsel, sorry, Corporation Counsel Marjorie Rice here to present. Welcome.
Thank you. Good to see you. Thank you. Marjorie Rice, Corporation Counsel. I'm here in place of Adam Wason, who had a conflict in his schedule, and I'll do my best to try to be as thorough as he is. We also have the controller here who's happy to answer any questions. So as the clerk said, there was a previous ordinance that approved this new position in Public Works. It has been paid up to this date out of another line that Public Works had in their budget. When the ordinance was approving the position, we didn't at that time bring an appropriation ordinance to you, so now we need to. It's been being paid out of the Facilities Maintenance Division's temporary employee budget. We're asking for an entire year's salary, so it's about $72,000 roughly for this entire year. And you know, it's September already, so you might have the question, like, why are we asking for an entire annual salary when it's September? I can tell you that the department wants to, they want to replenish that account that they've been paying it out of. So they want to replenish line 512, or 51120, Temporary Employee Budget Line, because that's the line that helps with some hiring temporary help to do building inspections and also to help the Brighton B-Town crew activities. So we are hopeful that you will approve all $72,000 so that they can backfill that line. If you don't, they said that they, they could just wait until 2025 for those temporary dollars to be filled in, but it will impair, you know, some of the things that they typically do. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that.
Thank you. Any questions for Corporation Counsel Rice? Councilmember Stasburg?
Kind of wondering if, thank you, by the way, for answering my first question, which was why do we need to ask for this much money in September? But I guess I'm kind of wondering why they didn't ask for this appropriation earlier, so that they wouldn't then have to backfill that other line?
I think it was, I don't think that they understood the process. I think that when this was brought forward as this new position, there was a misunderstanding that the, you know, that there was a second step that had to be, happen in order to get the, you know, that they were, you know, they did the math. They were like, oops, we're going to run out. And so we talked and said, no, you've got to, you know, there's, that's a two-step thing. You get the, the salary ordinance in place with the new position, but you need the money to pay the position. So that's why we're here before the end of the year. At least that's what, that was the explanation when I talked to HR.
Yes, go ahead.
So the follow-up to that then is, so has there been somebody employed in this position for all of 2024?
Yes, yes. So there has been, there was a person who was being paid out of, he was just, he was employing the mayor's office last year. He became a temporary employee in Public Works earlier this year and was being paid as his temporary employee. Then when the council approved this new position, they moved him into that position, but continued to use that temporary funding line for that salary. And so to make it correct, we need to actually have an additional appropriation. I will tell you that per the controller's office, it's actually 70, with FICA perf insurance, it's $73,886.59. We're asking for $72,000. And again, the explanation is they'll use this money to, in, it's all O1, it's all the O1 category, but they will use this to pay him for the rest of the year, and then they'll replenish their temporary line. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that, that answers that line of questioning. So I maybe have one more if other council members don't have any.
And if I couldn't comment on that one, I do think that we should probably always, at the same time that we're asking for a brand-new position to be filled, we should have a matching additional appropriation. It would make sense and timing-wise to have that. And again, I don't know if they thought, well, we can get through for a while and we'll go back and ask, you know, ask for that money later. Or again, if HR, when I talked to them about it, because I anticipated that question was going to come up, they're like, you know, I think being new, didn't realize that it's a two-step.
I actually have a follow-up question along these same lines. So if memory serves me, this was approved by council maybe in May or June, this position? So I don't understand why we are trying to cover a whole year's salary for a full-time position if the person actually was a temporary position paid out of the correct line, the temporary line, for half the year.
Yeah, well, what they want to do is they want to, they've, because they've spent down that line, that temporary line, they're hoping to, to backfill it and then have, not to backfill it because they need it to have paid him. They already paid him, right? But they want, they want to, and I can read you the exact, let me just read you what they sent was. Great question. This, we've been using the Facilities Maintenance Division's 51120 Temporary Employee Budget Line to fund this position. This was originally a new additional temporary position in the beginning of the year, and then became a regular full-time position with the salary ordinance update. Because this was- full-time position with the salary ordinance update. Because this was an unplanned employee expense when the 2024 budget was created, we've exhausted the 51120 funding to cover this new RFT position. The additional appropriation amount of $72,000 will allow for this new position to be fully funded while also restoring the Facilities Maintenance Division's Temporary Employee Budget Line to fund part-time employees. So, does that make sense?
Sort of, but, I mean, the individual, so, as I understand it, the incumbent has been doing the same work since January. At first, it was as a temp, and then it was as a full-time position. Is that right?
It was a new additional temporary position in the beginning of the year.
So, for the period before council approved the new position, that person was working as a temp, so they should have been paid out of the temp line.
They were.
So, I do not now want to approve an appropriation that will reimburse the temp line for funds that really should have come out of the temp line. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, and what, what, again, the, when, and I ask, so the question, they said, we did forego some plans for temporary help with building inspections and Brighton B-Town crew activities. But if we need to just wait for 2025 temp dollars to come in for that, we could wait. So, they, because they were paying this employee out of that line, they, they, for, they didn't spend it on the temporary help that they typically would with building inspections and Brighton B-Town crews, because they were using it for this employee. So, the answer was, we did forego some plans for temporary help with building inspections and Brighton B-Town crew activities. But if we need to just wait for 2025 temp dollars to come in for that, we could wait. So, they, they have some thought that they would like to use some temporary dollars, and they would, they would replenish that. But if you choose not to appropriate the entire $72,000, you know, and just, and I don't know if the Controller knows exactly what it would be for the last four months, you know, if you could do a quick math, but, but they, they've asked $72,000 because they want to backfill that line. That's up to the count, totally up to your discretion how you want to handle it.
Okay. Other council questions? Councilmember Asari?
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I, and it may also be a question, or maybe it's just sort of a combo question here. Am I right, if I were to just rephrase this, that they've spent, they've spent temporary money that was, that was budgeted? Essentially, what they're saying is, we wish we had more temporary money.
Yeah.
Right. Why are we not able to move money because we have, you know, I mean, there's money that reverts back to the general fund anyways at the end of the year that, you know, was over-budgeted, et cetera. Why don't they just use money that they have?
If they, and I don't know enough about the Public Works O1 lines, maybe Jessica does know that. So, I'm assuming that they haven't had vacancies. If they didn't have vacancies and they had, you know, they were fully staffing all of their permanent positions in O1s, they might not have extra.
And, and we're not able to move up from categories within, within a budget, is that correct?
No, so, so departments can move within their O1s, or their O2s, or their, you know, they can move within category.
But not between categories.
Yeah, but they can't move, they couldn't take like O2 money or O3 money and put it into the O1s. You guys could do that. You have the authority to transfer. The council has the authority to transfer from a category two to category one, but departments can only transfer within their.
That makes sense. And so, so my, my, can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes.
To that. So, so the follow-up question is, why, why is this the right mechanism within the, you know, if, why, why is this the appropriation that we're getting instead of an appropriation to say, let's move funds from one place to the other? And I think that what follows on from that is, you know, we, we're about to vote on the 2025 budget. This position is within that budget already funded because this person is continuing on. So, so the, the implication, again, isn't, isn't, we're not, we're not giving them an additional budget for 2025 per se, but we're really just giving them more flexible hourly pays. Okay.
Yeah, you're giving them more, you're giving, by appropriating this, you'll give them another additional $72,000 in addition to what you gave them already. Now, remember that it doesn't necessarily mean they will spend it all.
Yep.
They may, if they, if they do a bunch of temporary work, they may spend that. It's the authority, the additional appropriation is the authority to spend up to $72,000. And again, I think they want it because they, they have some plans for some temporary work from now to the end of the year. But, you know, if the council decides, hey, we want to cut it, we want to, you know, not give them the full $72,000, we'll need enough, obviously, to pay this employee for the rest of the year. But, and again, I don't know if Jessica knows exactly what those numbers are, but they just wouldn't, they just have to forego any use of the temporary line.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Ms. Rice? Yes, Councilmember Zulik?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. This isn't about necessarily this bill in particular, but I know we recently created a position for the clerk's office, and I was wondering if you needed to come back and do an appropriation for that as well?
I think we will, yes, yes. I think that there is going to, we'll have to, when we do that, we're gonna, and we had that on the calendar and then we pulled it. So, yes, we'll have to come back for that, yeah. And that made me think of something I was going to say, but I forget. Well, off my head now. I'll, I'll think of it in a minute. I think it was related to this Public Works position.
Maybe I should know this already. Why was it polled?
Why, what?
Why was it polled?
Oh, the, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
That was that, like, split, the bill thing, remember that?
Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely bring that back. I know what I was going to say about the, you may recall that in past years, the administration would bring back to you guys, sort of at the end of the year, an additional appropriation request at the very end and say, hey, these are all the lines that we need to catch up on. We are actually trying to have more conversation with the council throughout the year, so we're bringing these kinds of additional appropriations to you more often rather than, and I know this one maybe should have been a few months ago, but we think that budget conversations about this should happen all year long as, as needs, as needs come up. And so, rather than just doing the budget and then one catch-all additional appropriation at the end of the year, we're, we're trying to bring these more often.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Stossberg?
I have a round two, if nobody else has a round one.
It seems that nobody else does.
Okay, great. I just want to know where the $72,000 is coming from in terms of, yeah.
It'll just, it'll come from the general fund, yeah, general fund. So, the, there's, you know, money, and maybe the Controller could answer this better, but we have unappropriated dollars in a, in a general fund that she'll pull it from there and stick and appropriate it into the Public Works budget. Do you want to give a better answer to that, or is that good enough?
Okay, thanks.
I'm not a controller, I just play one on TV.
Any other questions? Is that a hand? Councilmember Asari, yes?
Just, is there another appropriation that, that we could do? I mean, I, I get the sort of convenience of this one, and I'm inclined to support it, but the, I'm, I'm just curious, again, back to that, that core question of like, why, why, why this appropriation instead of just asking us, let's move some money from this place to this place? Like, why do we need to tie it to this argument? We had this person, that all seems frivolous to me, and, but maybe I'm wrong.
Well, so are you essentially asking, why aren't we transferring money instead of additionally appropriating money?
That, yes. Or, or why don't we just appropriate directly to, they want an additional appropriation for, for temporary employers, employment?
So, I think, I don't, your question, I think, is, let me make sure I understand it, is, we're going to appropriate into, why don't we just appropriate into the 5211O line?
For example.
You could do that, and then that would allow, I mean, if you wanted to, but here's, I guess, the concern is that when you do an additional appropriation, you have to tell the taxpayers, and you have to advertise it and say, hey, we're spending more money than we told you we were going to spend, and you have to tell them the exact amount in the fund, and you advertise it 10 days ahead of time. So, we advertise this as general fund 101, 19, Public Works Facilities, classification one, personnel, and so, they'll be able to play around with it and, and.
Right, and I understand the convenience. I think, I think what, what, really what I'm getting at is that we're moving towards an outcome-based budgeting system where we want to tie all spending to clear outcomes. And so, by, by talking about this, like, you know, we, we, when we frame it in the, oh, we're backfilling and there was a person, and, you know, it, it doesn't allow us to say, well, what we really want to do is support, you know, Brighton Bloomington, and we need a little extra funds for that, because that's what we should be discussing, but instead, we're discussing the, you know, this person and the backfilling and the, which, to me, just feels like, you know, irrelevant to the actual thing we're talking about, is, is, I think, what I'm getting at.
Yeah, and I, I will tell you that I'm, as the department head, I don't know their O1 demands nearly as well as Adam does. I do think, though, because we're sticking it into their general O1 category, they, they will have that flexibility. And maybe that, maybe the thing to do is to have Department of Public Works come back and maybe give you a little more detail, or the Controller could send detail about where they stand, like a budget report for their O1s, if that would be helpful. You know what I mean? Just run a budget report, to see where they stand with their O1 lines. Maybe that would give you the, the sort of clarity of the transparency, because I hear you, I hear you that it sounds, it's like a little bit of a moving things around and not as clear as you might like.
It's very, it's very clear.
We could certainly run, we could certainly give you a report about where they stand with their O1s as of, you know, September 18.
Yeah, and, and, I mean, this is now a comment, so I'll share, I'll save that for later, but thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on appropriation ordinance 2024-03? If you are joining the meeting via Zoom, then you can use the raise hand function if you'd like to comment. If that doesn't work, you can send a message via chat to the meeting host. I don't see anybody in council chambers wanting to comment. Interim Attorney Administrator Kulak, do we have anybody online?
No immediate hands raised.
Okay, well, let's come back to council then for comments. Any council members wish to comment on this appropriation ordinance? Councilmember Asari?
I think, sort of just building off of my line of questioning, I, I, I'm content to, to, to support this today, however, it can, like, this is maybe like the third time that we've had a sort of ordinance that was just sort of done in a way that's saying, well, this is the easiest way for us to do it, rather than us having the direct conversation about the thing that we're trying to achieve. And, you know, again, like my soapbox is that we tie every bit of spending to clear outcomes that we're trying to achieve, so that those are the things that we're accountable to. And, I mean, I think, I think that that, that has been presented clearly, and it's, you know, I'm not, I mean, Director Wasin's not here, and I'm not going to, you know, like, you know, hold others, sort of, maybe to the scrutiny that we would have, but, but still, I, I, it, it does bother me personally that we get a thing that's presented as one thing, but it's actually another thing when, it's like, why don't, why don't we just do the thing that we're trying to do? And so, I mean, I, I will vote for this today because I think the, the argument is compelling. I want to support the, their ability to do Brighton, Brighton Bloomington, and all those other things. But then I'm also, you know, in the bigger sense that, as I spoke about throughout the time of, I should have a timer, and we're, we passed some ordinance about.
Oh, yes.
We did, we, I did talk throughout Budget Week about, about this sort of as being a clear priority to us, and so I don't want this to become a pattern, right? I think, if we're over-budgeting in a department, et cetera, like, let's, let's actually scrutinize that and use the money appropriately. But again, this is authority to do it. I support the, their, the proposed use of it, but it's a little bit hard to hold accountable for that when what we're actually approving is backfilling a position and not the use of, of the, of the funds directly. So, that was rambly, I'm sorry, but, but that's, I, I will be voting yes on it.
Any other council member comments? Councilmember Stossberg?
Should we put a timer on this? Okay, not that I'm going to come close to, to five minutes, but I guess I've been sitting here thinking about an amendment to reduce this amount because, kind of what Councilmember Asari was, was talking about, I feel like the Public Works Department made a decision for the first five, six months of this year to have this person be paid out of their temporary line. And then it got, kind of promoted to a permanent position, and then at that time, it, it should be being paid differently. And I'm kind of hesitant to go like, oh, well, you made this decision, and now maybe you wish you'd made a different decision, and we'll just give you all of this money anyway. So, I, I don't know how easy it is to amend an appropriation ordinance. I also kind of feel like, well, like, if we have the money in the general fund without it being problematic, like, how much does it matter? But I feel like it kind of does matter because of the signal that we're maybe sending. But I'm interested in understanding maybe from Attorney Kulak, how difficult it would be to amend this number differently, also maybe from Controller McClellan, what number it might be amended to, to kind of account for this position just from mid-year on, and also from my fellow council members, whether they are interested in potentially doing that. Thank you.
Well, I think that at this point, interim Attorney Administrator Kulak, do you have a response as far as if we can amend and how so?
Yeah, I was going to ask if you wanted me to respond first or the Controller about the number. But if, if you'd like to amend the appropriation ordinance, I do think that's possible. I might need a few minutes to type it up.
But it's legally possible to do that tonight? I, I imagine if we, only if we go lower, not higher?
Let me double-check because the, I know the amount was advertised.
Corporation Counsel, Councilor Marjorie Rice, do you know the answer to that?
Yeah. So, you, you certainly couldn't give us more, which I don't think we're at risk of, but you could reduce, you can make a motion to reduce this to just whatever amount you, you say. I know that, I was talking to the Controller, we need $31,000 and change for sure to make payroll for the end of the year. So, somebody could make a motions as I move to reduce the additional appropriation to fill-in-the-blank for the big round number. And we would ask for at least $32,000, because it's $31,000 and some change, to make payroll for this position. Does that make sense?
It makes sense to me. Councilmember Stossberg?
So, between now and the end of the year, this position needs another $30,000 just to make payroll, or is that including any other temporary lines, like, temporary salary lines as well as this position?
I was, I don't have the exact numbers, but I believe that that's their salary and the benefits, the, you know, the go-long, FICA, perf, et cetera.
The position needs $32,000.
Could you please introduce yourself?
Jessica McClellan, City Controller. The position needs $32,000, and then they have been asking me to fix this since the salary ordinance was done in March, and they said they could limp along in the temporary line, but they would have to get additional. So, they have, they have been aware of this and knowing that it's eating their temporary line. And I don't know exactly what they would need for Brighton B-Town and the Building Inspector in their temporary line, so, but I do know what they need for this position, and it's $32,000. So, but I do know what they need for this position and it's $32,000.
Are there already temporary employees that are also employed that are being paid out of that temporary line as well?
I don't, I don't know. I can't really tell without talking to them.
So I do have an answer. Apologies, interim.
Yes, Attorney Kulak?
Yes, interim Council Attorney Kulak. So I found the state code provision title, Indiana Code 36-4-7-8. So basically, the city legislative body may, on recommendation of the city executive, which this is, make further or additional appropriations by ordinance unless the result is to increase the tax levy. And the legislative body may by ordinance decrease, decrease any appropriation. So it is possible to decrease.
Thank you.
So I think what, just, I, if you only appropriate, let's say, $32,000 to cover this one, I don't know what the practical impact is going to be on Public Works and any other, you know, building inspections, Brighton B-Town activities. I don't know if that's going to, what kind of wrinkle that's going to put in their operations. If you, and I, it's totally up to your schedule. I mean, if this is something that you think, hey, I want, you know, I'd rather have Adam here to give these details, Margie did her best, but hey, we need the department head. You certainly can continue tonight's hearing. It was, this is technically a public hearing. When you do an additional appropriation, you have a public hearing and it's, tonight's the night for the public hearing. So you would need to continue it in this meeting to another date, time specific, since this has been advertised as a public hearing on this matter, if you don't feel as if you have enough information to make a decision tonight. And I, and I don't know, I can tell you, well, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, I can tell you with certainty that a $72,000 appropriation out of the general fund is not going to break the bank. I mean, so it's not like you're, you're going to be at risk of, you know, I don't, I think that's fair, right, Controller? But I understand, I understand completely your comments, and I hear you, about let's be more direct. Like, you know, if we had come forward and said, hey, the Public Works needs, you know, so much for Brighton B-Town and for this, and maybe to give you the more granular detail. And I, I'm definitely going to take that feedback back to the administration.
Okay. We were in the midst of council member comment, and I, I did want to make a comment, but then we can certainly come back for any other motions. Oh, Councilmember Zulik, please.
Thank you. I guess I just wonder if it would be more productive if we were to postpone this until Director Wason was able to answer other questions that we might have.
Yes. Good point. Well, I, I would just like to make a comment. And I, I agree with Councilmember Asari that we were using the wrong framing for these additional appropriations we need to start with. What are we trying to accomplish? Specifically for this, I'm going to read the one paragraph in the staff memo that came along with this legislation regarding this additional appropriation. It says, "Public Works now employs a facilities, operations, and asset specialist. This is a new position in 2024, and it was previously authorized by the council. However, the funding was not put in place at that time. There is an employee in place, and in order to cover payroll expense for the remainder of the year, an additional $72,000 is necessary." Now, through the course of this meeting, I've, I've learned this is not true. This is just not true. I don't think anybody was trying to necessarily lie, but I think that everybody in the administration needs to be accurate in what they relay to the council and needs to be thorough in what they relay to the council. And we have learned that the actual, the employee, the $72,000 is not necessary to cover payroll expenses for the remainder of the year. It's necessary because payroll expenses had been paid from a different line. And there's no mention here about Public Works being short in the temporary line, needing it to accomplish other goals. So that disappoints me, frankly. Now I am ready for any other motions that council members might have regarding this matter.
May I address that?
Yes.
So I, I would disagree that it's not true. I would 100% agree that it's not as detailed and specific. So it is going to cover payroll expense. This is going into an O1 line, happens to be covering payroll expense for the new position as well as payroll expense for temporary positions. It's all payroll. Is it as specific as we got into this detail tonight? No. It is true. This $72,000 would cover payroll expenses for this position, for temporary employees. So I could have been more specific when I wrote this, and I could have said everything that I told you tonight. The fact is, I didn't know this detail. The level of detail that I know now, I didn't know on July 26th. But I knew it was all O1. So are you, are you referring to this memorandum?
Yes, and I just realized it says July 26th.
Yes.
Which is odd.
Yeah. And so I, what, I always try to anticipate what questions are going to come my way as I prepare for a meeting, and I thought, this one's going to come up. Let's make sure I know what the answers are to these questions. And so, but anything that you put in an O1 line can only be for payroll. So all of this $72,000 is going for payroll. It's just the granular detail, I didn't put in this memo because I didn't have it on July 26th.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So it's back to council. Would anybody like to make a motion? Councilmember Zulik?
I make a motion that we postpone this topic until October 1st, when we have a regular council session on a Tuesday, in the hopes that Director Wason can attend and answer some of our questions that pertain to Public Works.
Point of information, I think that we would have to continue it, not postpone it, if we decided to do that.
We would have to.
To continue it, not postpone it. Is that correct, Deputy Attorney?
So this has been, this is a public hearing, so you'll need to continue the public hearing. You'll have to state the exact date and time of the next public hearing. And if you do that in this meeting, then there's no need to re-advertise it. So you just pick the next date that you're going to hear this, and we'll continue this public hearing to that date and time.
Thank you. In that case, I move to continue this public hearing on October 1st at 6:30, when we have a regular common council session.
Is there a second? All right, there's a motion and a second. Are there any questions about the motion or comments? Councilmember Stossberg?
This is a question for the controller. You said that there needed to be the minimum of $32,000-ish dollars in order to do payroll for the rest of the year. When do you actually need that money?
That is another question we're going to have to ask Adam, because I'm not really sure how his, like, what his staffing looks like right now and if he would be able to cover it from another line at the moment. So are you asking about?
When is, when does the next pay drop? Like, when is, like?
There's a pay this Friday and then a pay in, you know, two Fridays after that. So there is a pay this Friday. But we can find that out.
Is the heart of your question, are we going to run out of money for payroll?
Yeah, it's a, is this something that, if, if it is continued and it's, and it waits, would that cause a problem for payroll?
And, and there is, because we have October, November, December left, and because Department Heads can move money around in the O1 category without your approval, they can make it work. And, I mean, provided that, you know, you don't get too, that's why the, that's why the administration would always come at the end of the year before the, you know, before they run out of stuff. So you, you're, you would not put him in a bind, I don't think, if you continue it till, what day are you thinking?
It was, it was for Tuesday, October 1st at 6:30.
Yeah, I think that'd be fine. You're not going to, we're not going to not make payroll if you continue to that day.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments about the motion? I will just say, I, I apologize for my harsh words previously. I just felt a little bit misled, but I realize it was not with any ill intention. All right, well, we can call the question on the motion then. No, I don't think so. Do we need public comment on the motion to continue to October 1st? Interim Attorney Administrator Kulak?
I wouldn't imagine so. It's not like an item of legislation or an amendment.
Okay, that's what I thought.
If you treat it as your other motions.
Okay, thank you. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to continue this public hearing on appropriation ordinance 2024-03 to October 1st at 6:30 PM?
Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
No.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes by a vote of seven to one. So we will continue the public hearing on October 1st, and we very much hope that Director Adam Wason will be available, as well as Corporation Counsel Rice. And we can move to the next item on our agenda?
Let me find my numbers. I would like to move that appropriation ordinance 2024-04 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to introduce appropriation ordinance 2024-04. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Clerk Bolden, will you please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2024-04 to additionally appropriate from the Public Works General Fund for debris removal. I, I move appro- Sorry, I haven't done the synopsis yet. I'm sorry, I just, the synopsis is as follows. On June 25th, 2024, the city of Bloomington was struck by a supercell storm and incurred costs to a third party hired to perform debris cleanup and removal. The Public Works Department is requesting an additional appropriation to cover the cost paid to the third-party vendor. And that's it.
I move appropriation ordinance 2024-04 be adopted.
Very good, and we have Corporation Counsel Rice back with us.
Yes. Okay, and before we get started, I'm wondering if you guys might want to continue this one too, since you're going to have Adam back here on October 1st? Just offering that, because I'll tell you that this $500,000 is going to supplement the Public Works budget, category three. So we are asking for this $500,000 to go back into their budget to cover expenses that they've incurred since the storm. But if you are going to want to talk about, hey, why not transfer, or what, what's your budget look like, you probably should, and I, I mean this honestly, you should probably just continue this one too and have Adam address it. I'm prepared to address this tonight and can give you what detail I know. But I can tell you, you know, the storm happened on June 25th. It was crazy number of calls I actually got from dispatch. There was 1,543 calls made between four and five o'clock that day. That's 25.71 calls a minute, and they only had four dispatchers. So there was, they were taking about 6.43 calls per person, per minute. So tremendous number of trees down, so many that Public Works could not deal with it on their own. So they hired a contractor to help using emergency provision statutes, and they have spent, get my notes, they have spent 400, let me get those details, little shy of $500,000 on, on tree work and, including Bluestone and the Williams Tree Company out of Martinsville. They also have had additional personnel expenses, or, I'm sorry, like overtime expenses. And, you know, and they are actually collecting a lot of these, I'm looking for my detail, I can't find it. They're, they're collecting a lot of these charges that Public Works has incurred because they're going to be trying to get reimbursement from, here it is, trying to get reimbursement for the storm damage from FEMA or the state. So they're still working on the numbers, but as of, as of yesterday, they had calculated about an extra $177,421 in O1 overtime, about $150,000 in equipment. I have no detail as to what that is. Materials and supplies, both for Public Works, parks, ITS, and animal shelter, about $99,596.90. Contracts with Williams Tree and Bluestone, $489,865. That's what I'm talking to you about tonight, that $500,000. And they had a street building repair for an awning. I couldn't believe this number, but it's here, $1,012,000 for teardown electrical and replace, at least that's the quote. I don't think it's been done yet. So their estimate as of yesterday, oh, also utilities, total cost of $227,973.99. And so estimate of about two, 2.1 million. So the storm was tremendous, caused a lot of damage, but what, what this request tonight is for $500,000 to cover the costs that they did not expect to incur for the, to the Bluestone and the Williams Tree. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Asari?
Just a very, very simple one is that, given the monumental additional cost, um, do you think that there's going to be another appropriation? Or was that sort of covered in, already in, in emergency funds that they had?
That is a great question. I, I think, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. And Jessica, have you heard if they think they're going to need more than this $500,000?
I don't know.
Not? Mm-mm.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Rice. I, my question is about, and we, we had discussed this regarding a constituent in District Four who initiated a service by company, a company to, to remove a tree that was blocking the road because they were unable to leave their property. I assume their neighbors might not have, I don't know. My question is, is, did, are all of these expenses, were they initiated by the city or are there any reimbursed, or were any initiated by residents that were then reimbursed?
These are all initiated by the city. So for example, the wages, that was a breakdown of, and this is Dan, a workman in the Public Works Department, sort of collecting all of these, this kind of citywide costs. So this was not all, all necessarily Public Works, but those wages involved animal, fire, ITS, parks, police, Public Works, street, and utilities. These are, these are the city expenses, city-initiated expenses, that they're trying to collect, they're just kind of the preliminary storm numbers. And they're keeping track because they're going to submit them and hopefully try to get some, some reimbursement.
Just as a follow-up, is that- Just as a follow-up, is that the primary reason why the city does not want to reimburse this individual for initiating a work done by this, by a company?
That's no, it's more a matter, that situation that you and I talked about is more a matter of principle, and that particular situation, the homeowner decided to pay a private tree company the day of the storm to clear a tree that the city probably would have gotten to in about, you know, who knows, three to four days. We had eyes on it, we knew it was on the ground, we knew it was blocking the road, but there were so many trees to be dealt with that we couldn't get to that one immediately that day. And they were really just assessing damage and dealing with the most immediate issues that day. And so as a matter of principle, we can't sort of open up the city checkbook and allow people to hire private contractors and just assume the city's gonna pay them back when we have people who would, are on staff to deal with those very issues. So it's unfortunate that somebody, you know, paid out of pocket, but we can't be responsible for private costs that people decide to incur, not with taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, I understand that. Would the city have taken care of that tree themselves, or would we would have contracted out? Because it seems that we, is everything we contracted out the day of?
I don't have a list of what projects we did and what projects the private contractor did. That's probably a list, again, that Adam could give you. I know that we had our street crews out there doing work. This particular incident that we had talked about, there were Duke power lines in that tree, and that was another reason why we had to lay Duke. We allowed Duke to come and fix their lines before we start messing around with a tree that's caught up in the lines.
Right, yeah.
But as a matter of fact, I don't know, I believe that this, just from the conversations I've had with the, you know, the Public Works employees, I believe that's a tree that we probably would have at least cut, you know, in two places to clear the road, and then gone back, you know, once we cleared the road. I think that was something we probably would have done very quickly, once the lines, again, once the Duke lines were taken care of.
One more, were there any other circumstances, any other individuals who took the initiative that had to incur their own costs, who then approached the city and said, you didn't get to this right away, so I needed to go forward?
I have had other tort claims come in, just random, you know, tree branch from a city tree fell on somebody's property, or, you know, fell on a porch roof. And we've denied those because, again, we had no prior notice, this was a, you know, act of God, if you will. We were not negligent, and therefore the taxpayer shouldn't be responsible, that's why people have homeowners insurance.
Is it, was that a city tree that fell, that blocked?
Yeah, it was allegedly a city tree, and we denied those because, again, this, I feel very firm strongly as the Corporation Counsel that when the city is negligent, we should own up to that, but when we're not, and it's just a random acts that, you know, whether that's a pothole that you're trying to fill in the wintertime with cold micks and doesn't stay in there when it rains, if we're really diligent about filling that, and then it gets washed out by a rainstorm, and somebody's tire gets busted, that's not the city's fault, we did everything we could to keep it filled. And I feel the same way. If we weren't negligent, and we weren't negligent because the storm came, I don't want to use taxpayer money to pay for those expenses. Again, people have to have homeowners insurance to cover for storm damage. This is not a state where we have strict liability against municipalities.
Thank you for those answers.
Are there other questions on this appropriation ordinance from council? Councilmember Stasburg?
I'll basically ask again, like, I mean, this $500,000 is coming out of the general fund, but it's, of course, a much bigger number than the $72,000 in terms of that kind of additional appropriation. So there's that question, and I don't know if that's better for Controller McClellan. And then the other question that I have has to do with the FEMA reimbursement, when we might know about that.
I don't know when the, do you know the timeline on that FEMA reimbursement?
No.
I don't know, but we can find that out and answer that. So FEMA reimbursement timeline, and what was your first question?
The first question was, I mean, $500,000, I mean, that's like half a million dollars, that's kind of a lot. It feels like a lot of extra to have hanging around in the general fund, but how is that?
Oh, you mean how much money is in the general fund?
Well, or like, is that really a lot of extra in the general fund? Like, is this kind of, I mean, it was storm damage, like, what can we do about it?
Yeah.
You just spoke very eloquently about these things happen, but I just don't know kind of how much extra we have in there for this kind of emergency.
Yeah, roughly the general fund cash reserve balance is around 50 million, like we discussed at budget hearings.
All right, any other questions before we go to the public? All right, is there any member of the public who would like to comment on appropriation ordinance 2024-04? Additional appropriation to cover costs of storm debris removal. Don't see anybody in council chambers.
If you'd like to make a comment, you can do so using the raise hand feature. You can find that in the reactions tab or the more tab, or send a chat to the meeting host. And as a reminder, this public comment period serves as the public hearing for this appropriation ordinance.
Thank you, interim Attorney Administrator Kulak. Do you see anybody's hand raised?
No.
Okay. All right, we will come back to council members for council comments or possible motion if so desired.
I would like to make a motion to continue this to our October 1st meeting, when our Public Works Director can attend and provide further detail about these expenses.
So that's a motion to continue to October 1st?
Yep.
There should be a time in there, too.
6:30, is that sufficient?
All right, are there any questions or comments on the motion? Councilmember Stasburg?
I think that this particular appropriation ordinance was pretty clear in terms of that $500,000 to be spent on those contract tree services, specifically in terms of this storm event, so I don't see a need to continue it till October.
Any other comments or questions about the motion? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Asari?
Just saying that I agree with Councilmember Stasburg, and, you know, I mean, I think given the magnitude of the storm and the response that was needed, I'm grateful to both the external companies and Public Works for responding so quickly and swiftly to that cleanup. And, yeah, I just, I want to pass that so that we don't need to rehash that conversation.
All right, any other comments or questions? Clerk Bolden, will you please call the roll on the motion to continue this appropriation ordinance to October 1st at 6:30 PM?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
No.
Stasburg?
No.
Asari?
No.
Rosenbarger?
No.
Sorry, Daley?
No.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
All right, that motion fails by a vote of three to five. So we will vote this evening. Are there any final comments before we vote on the appropriation ordinance? Seeing none, Clerk Bolden, will you please call the roll on appropriation ordinance 2024-04?
Just one moment, please. Okay, Councilmember Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
No.
Ruff?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so that appropriation ordinance is passed by a vote of seven to one. Thank you. All right, next we will move to our second period of public comment for items that are not on the agenda. And this is, members of the public are welcome to comment on items not on our agenda, either at the start of the meeting or at the end of the meeting. So if those, if there are members of the public who have already spoken at the first period, they are not eligible to speak at the second period. That may be a moot point, since I see nobody getting up to approach the podium. If there's anybody on Zoom who would like to give public comment on items not on the agenda, please use the raise hand function. And if that doesn't work, you can use the chat function and send a message to the meeting host. Interim Attorney Administrator Kulak, do we have anybody?
Yes, we have one hand raised at this time by the name of Jamie. I will ask to unmute.
Okay, please give your full name, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
My name is Jamie Shoal, and thank you for this opportunity for public comment. I'll be brief. I saw, I got a message from my son today that the Fed has changed the interest rates, and I just finished reading their statement from the Board of Directors about why they did this, and I don't see that it's really based in truth. Therefore, and I have also seen and listened to podcasts about mention of stagflation. Since this is a meeting that also includes some budgetary items, it seems appropriate to mention that stagflation was last seen, in my memory, when, in the 1970s, I was very, very young, but had really strong memories of how difficult the time was in that recession. And when considering the budget and in regards to changes and weather events from climate change, that the council and also asked the administration to look very carefully about how we spend money as a city, because we have so many needs, and if our ability to pay those and continue to increase wages is challenged by forces outside of the city's control, that we be prepared. Thank you again for public comment.
Thank you. Interim Attorney Administrator Kulak, is there anybody else?
Yes, there is Jennifer Crossley.
Okay, welcome. You'll please state your full name, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I'm actually surprised to be watching your meeting this evening, considering all the meetings that we've had in the county. But nonetheless, my name is Jennifer Crossley, Monroe County Councilwoman for District Four, and I'm sure that all of you are very much aware of what we are doing, and in terms of needing a new justice facility, a new jail, as it has been said time and time again that we have to have a new jail. Yesterday, we had a meeting, and we talked about what we needed to do in terms of a correctional text, and there was a general consensus, I may comment, I'll just speak for myself, but I tend to think that there's a general feel that we, on the county side, would love to see how we could partner together with our city colleagues here to figure out, in addition to just building a jail and a justice facility, how we can really, truly reduce recidivism, and how we can stop, you know, just having just concepts of plans, whether that's concepts of plans in county or in city, but really, truly put those concepts together and make action out of it. So I implore all of my colleagues here, and those that are not here, to really join us, really, actually, if you have a moment, you know, watch our meeting from last night, watch our meeting on Monday. I know Councilmember Piedmont Smith was there and attended via Teams as well. But all those that have not had a chance to do so, I really implore you all to really pay attention to what it is that we're doing, because this isn't just a City of Bloomington problem, this isn't just a Monroe County problem, this is all of our issues as elected officials. And I would really think that our community really would want all of us to run on the values that we ran on when we were running for office, and make good promises to our community members and truly work together. So I'd love to see some more of you all attend our meetings, and really, truly try to come up with plans and a way to reduce recidivism by thinking of other alternatives such as transitional homes, transitional centers, rehabilitation centers. So again, thank you for your time, thank you for all you do, and I look forward to much collaborations in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other hands raised on Zoom?
Not at this time, no.
All right, thank you. We will come back to the next item in the agenda, which is the discussion of the council's schedule. And I would like to call a special session of the common council for Wednesday, October 30th, at 6:30 PM in council chambers, to discuss, or to discuss and vote on two salary ordinances, the fire and police personnel salary ordinance, and the ask-me represented staff and other appointed staff of the city salary ordinance, that's a mouthful, since those will not be ready when we consider the budgetary appropriation ordinances next week. So I believe the clerk's office is available, and please mark your calendars for that session. There are other upcoming meetings that I wanted to note for the public and remind my colleagues about. Next Tuesday, September 24th, we're going to have a work session with the city controller on the general obligation bonds from 12 to 1 PM in the McCloskey Conference Room in City Hall. On Tuesday, October 1st, there will be a joint meeting of the city council, the mayor, the county commissioners, and the county council, and members of the capital improvement board at the Monroe Convention Center in the Duke Meeting Room at 10:30 AM, to be, to discuss the convention center project designs and next steps. Then our next regular session, as has been noted, will be on a Tuesday in two weeks, October 1st, due to the Jewish New Year falling on the Wednesday. Before that, next week, on September 25th, on Wednesday, we will be having a special session to introduce the three appropriation ordinances that make up the budget of the civil city of Bloomington, the City of Bloomington Utilities, and the Bloomington Transportation Corporation. And then we will have a committee of the whole meeting to discuss those items. So those, I think, are all of the meetings to note, that's plenty. Deputy, or interim Attorney Administrator Kulak, did I miss anything?
No, I think you got it all. The three appropriation ordinances, and then the timeline for the salary ordinances.
Very good. And for those who, for those very few people who may be wondering about the third salary ordinance we generally discuss, which is for elected officials, that actually doesn't have a deadline until December 31st, and we are trying to study and get more comparative information from other communities to advise us on drafting that ordinance, so that will not be ready until- to advise us on drafting that ordinance, so that will not be ready until November. All right, I think that's it for tonight. Thank you very much, and we are adjourned.